Good morning. I call the Celine County Commission Public Forum and Meeting for June 16th, 2015 to order. Would everybody stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the acting clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Sadwick?
Yep, here.
Dial?
Here.
Mr. Price is here. Ms. Larson?
Here.
And Mr. Smith?
Here.
Move next to the public forum. It's a time set aside every week for citizens to talk about issues that are not on the agenda today. It's normally limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time?
Norman, out of Pleasant Hill Road. Upstairs, you were discussing about washing for the road and bridge department. Will that water be reclaimed and reused?
Yes. And we don't have a reclamer out at our place. We don't have a reclamer at ours right at this point, but the place where we send them now will be reclaimed. And if we build a truck horse, we'd have to have a reclamer. That's very expensive.
Well, because I don't think people understand the water problem. You see what they're doing out west? They're not even washing vehicles out in California for the state and county. There's so short of water. And it isn't a matter of if, it's a matter of when.
Right, I agree.
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin. Just wanted to ask, yesterday you had a executive session meeting. I was wondering who was all in attendance roughly the times you met? And was there any action coming out of that?
Yes, I believe the clerk took minutes and there was no one here from the public and there was no public business.
But all five of you were there?
Pardon me?
Were all five of you there?
Yes, we were.
And roughly what time did you meet from?
He would have that down in the minutes.
Yeah, but you know if it was...
Our first one was forty-five minutes. Our second, we went back for the second person for forty-five minutes.
Twelve to twelve forty-five.
And then we had an extra fifteen minutes that we discussed things.
Right.
But there's no voting or anything done in that.
Okay, so there was no action?
No.
No.
We have more interviews.
Okay.
This is interviews, is what it is.
Okay, that's a nice clarification. I also wanted to change topics just a little bit. I was hoping with the sheriff here that he would be able to address for us. I just hear confusing or conflicting figures and I'd like to hear from the authority what it costs to house inmate at the jail. I'm believing you've said your costs were about fifty-four thousand, or excuse me, fifty-four dollars per day. I was curious what the rates might be in other facilities where you send the overflow of inmates. And then I'm curious, do you house people for the State Highway Patrol or State Troopers?
We house for the Highway Patrol. Anyone that brings prisoners in, we house for them. Our daily average cost of prison is approximately forty-five dollars a day.
Okay.
What we pay out of county is for four of the agencies that we go to, it's thirty dollars a day. Junction City would be forty dollars a day and Wichita is forty dollars a day.
And with the people, do you charge like the Highway Patrol for holding theirs?
We're gonna need, if we're gonna continue this...
We're gonna have a conversation. We need to get the speaker.
Yeah, I just have one more question.
Well, he just needs to be on, at the microphone.
He needs to be at the microphone. Okay. But what is it you charge the city and the state for taking care of their inmates? Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to come forward at this time? We'll move on to regular business and I believe there's an addition to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion that we modify our agenda today and add to item, add before item number one, make it item number one. We have a request from the Celine County Health Department with Joyce making a presentation this morning.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that and I'm gonna call it item one A.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, it has been approved. So let's move to item one A and please go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. We received a notice last week from the K D H E Family Planning Program that they would award us an additional six thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars for state fiscal year 2015. And that would bring our total for our family planning dollars to thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. And this would be additional funding that could be used for health information technology or additional contraceptive inventory. And we chose to use it on additional contraceptive inventories because we are not at a point at the Health Department where we can be looking into health information technology, which is like electronic records. So we are asking the Commissioners to approve this. It's timely because we have to have the funds expended by June 29th for calendar year 2015.
Questions to staff? Is there public comment?
I would again ask that the Commission approve those funds. We don't know when, whether the state will be able to make such monies available in the future.
That is true. Any further public comments? Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
I'm gonna make the motion since I'm writing it down here. I move that we approve six thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars additional to the family planning grant.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
Who's second it?
Ms. Larson. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you for waiting. Item number one, RFA 158-15, purchase of body cameras for the Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Commissioners. This request that we have in front of you is, over the past, we've been looking and you know the media's been pretty straightforward and body cameras seem to be the hot topic. We've decided it's probably the best interest of us to move forward with purchases of some body cameras. We have the background in place, the server in place with the video, in-car video systems to use cameras that are sold through that company. Our request this morning is to purchase body cameras, thirty-seven body cameras and nine downloading cables and charging docks from L3 Communications for thirty-three thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and fifteen cents. That would be paid for out of drug forfeiture money that the Sheriff's Office has.
And that's eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars apiece? Is that right?
Per camera, yes.
Per camera.
And the downloading docks are about forty dollars apiece.
And we had this conversation, you guys had one that was less expensive, but it was uncomfortable.
Yeah, it was a problem. Yeah, it didn't make it a day.
Okay. Are your officers supportive of this?
They are. They've, they see the benefit in it, especially with the things that have been in the media. They've been really, they're a lot, they like this model much more than the last one we tried. Of course, it didn't last long, but...
Shut us.
I don't have it. I didn't bring it today.
Last week we got to see it and I appreciate your presentation last week. Further questions to staff? Is there public comment on this?
Yes, Norman, out of Pleasant Hill Road. I voiced my opposition to it last week because videos are inaccurate, cameras are inaccurate. I have photos here that have been taken by cameras and I will show it to the Commissioner that you cannot verify stuff that is taken by cameras, misleading. And I challenge any one of you to identify the difference between the vehicles. It's the same vehicle, or is it?
If you go back to the podium there and...
Now, unless them don't have a toolbox on it.
You're better.
The windows aren't signed.
Appreciate your point. Anything else you'd like to add today?
Maybe we need to look for a little cheaper camera. Just because of free money doesn't mean we need to waste it.
It's all taxpayer money. You're right, I agree.
But is anybody, can anybody see the difference between the vehicles? What?
Toolbox.
Nope.
One of them don't have a toolbox.
That ain't it.
Well, that picture is that much different. I'm just telling you that that's a different picture. No, it's in that picture over there.
Well, I think your point's still taken. I mean, the video is not perfect, so...
Oh, yeah.
Anything else we'd like to look at? Thank you, Norman. Do you got any other comments?
One of them didn't have.
Yeah, it did.
All right, any further public comments? Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the Sheriff's Office to purchase the thirty-seven body cameras and nine charger downloader caddies for thirty-three thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and fifteen cents as recommended by the staff.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes five zero. Item number two.
Okay.
I'll take over your job this time.
RFA 159-15, Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG program. Staff comments by Sheriff Glenn and Captain Roger.
Captain?
The grant, the block grant program is administered by the Office of Justice. This is an annual program that we get. It's usually about in the same dollar amount. The city of Slino was actually awarded sixteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars in this year in JAG grant funding. As a disparate agency under the city, we get two thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars to purchase equipment to be used in our, in our jobs. We identified the need for this year. We do like to use the money to purchase two more new portable radios for the officers and patrol. The cost of those two radios would be two thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty cents, which is a little, is three hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty cents more than what the grant has. That difference in the quote would be made up from drug forfeiture money as well.
Questions?
Is this a need, this radio or these radios?
The radios that we, the old radios we got are failing and they don't, can't get parts for them anymore. I've got a pile.
Okay. Well, I just wondering if it was a need or it was just something that you wanted, means you had the money or the grant?
No, we've, and you've seen the budget request.
Yeah, I understand that.
Every year I've been asking.
I understand that.
It's become, it's getting to the point where they're just, they need replaced.
Okay.
Public comment? Again, bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I may, we approve the request for the recommend by staff of the, let's see...
Two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars, right?
How much was it?
Two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four, is that right?
Two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars.
That was ninety-four.
Or ninety-four.
Was it ninety?
Yeah. Two thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty cents.
Twenty.
And twenty cents.
Is there a second?
For the RFA 159-15?
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Passes five zero. Thank you for coming by, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Lieutenant, you can come up to the head table.
We'd probably enjoy saying him a little more, so...
Item number three.
Thanks. I sent you the same sheet last month. We weren't real busy. May, we had twenty-one kids that we dealt with. It's kind of an average. I mean, it wasn't, didn't seem like it was very busy. Our daily populate, our average per day did go down from the ten point four three to eight point five two. Our average day, like I told you, was gonna drop. It dropped from thirty-one to eighteen point eight eight because we got rid of those few long timers. So it was pretty much an average month last month. It wasn't too exciting, nothing, nothing too interesting with it. Twenty-seven trips to Junction, no, twenty-seven, yeah, twenty-seven trips to Junction City, so...
Don't we like slow months, though?
Huh?
Slow months are okay.
Slow months are good months.
Okay.
You gotta like it that way. This month has actually been even slower, so...
Okay. A question, are you having, are they having problems with some of our people over there?
Yes, they have had.
Well, I've heard, I heard that just from the sheriff, but I've not heard that over there. I'll be there tomorrow and I'll find out about what's going on.
Yeah, they've had some issues. I know they had a couple of our kids that were talking with each other and they were taking string out of the beds, the mattresses, the pillows and that. And they were planning on attacking guards, killing guards to escape and that. But that's basically the same thing that I was dealing with. Same kids that we had when we closed the juvenile center, it was a couple of those same kids.
Well, we've had them over there for a year and a half and we've not had any, we've not had any problems that I've heard of. That was...
This was...
This is the first time I've heard it and I heard it here, but I haven't heard it over there yet.
This was just, just within the last few weeks and...
It was last week?
Yeah. Well, that's when the problems have been happening, was within the last couple of weeks. Not much we can do with what we have over there.
Sure, sure.
But we, they are both gone from the facility now, so we shouldn't have too much more issue over there.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to verify that, because when I go over there tomorrow, I'll, I'll leave.
Yeah, I actually got a call from Brad last week about the issue.
Thank you.
All right, further questions?
Where do they go from, where do they go from this facility?
One of them went to the adult corrections and one of them went to the juvenile corrections for better, lack of better term, the juvenile prison in Topeka.
All right, thank you for the update. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Sean.
Move to item number four, County Appraisers Monthly Update.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Weren't you just here last week? Seems like it.
Well, it hasn't been quite that recently that...
But it seems like it was that long.
I know you're always glad to see me.
Yeah, we are.
I have a PowerPoint for you this morning, just to update you a little bit on the written report that I submitted on reappraisal maintenance in Orion. You're gonna hear this a lot. Our, our staff, our appraisers are working on sales and the seventeen percent reinspection or recollect. I might say that was kind of a challenge in May because we're working in the rural areas. And I was wondering if there was room in our budget for a boat if it gets much worse. That's a joke.
Where we all just don't pay.
Do you just want a trolling motor on it?
Yeah, just a little paw.
No, just paddle.
I've got a trolling motor on.
Okay, I'll come out to your place and pick it up.
We might get you, we might get you a couple of those ducks you put around your waist.
We might need that. Recollect, as you know, is done annually. We do about seventeen percent of the county and we have four residential and one commercial appraiser out in the field doing that. Also, we have, our three newest field appraisers are at class this week taking residential and agricultural data collection class. We certified values to the county clerk on June 12th, that's last Friday. The deadline for doing so was yesterday, the fifteenth, so we were within the parameters of the timeline for certification. And I'll be talking a little more about that pretty shortly. Our June hearings, not too bad. We have thirteen second half payment under protest hearings and we usually have payment under protest shortly after the first half is due and again after the second half, usually around a hundred, seventy-five to a hundred a year. We have five BODA small claims this month and one BODA at the regular court of tax appeals. Legislative issues, well, gosh, they've sure been in the news and our legislature finally got things finished up for the 2015 session just this past weekend. I received updates from KAC about legislative issues and I'm just gonna hit on a couple of points. One is the Senate passed House sub for Senate Bill 270 and that was the trailer bill that modified property tax lid on cities and counties. And then the House passed House sub for two, Senate Bill 270, same thing. House Bill, or Senate Bill 270 that creates a tax lid does not address the timing issues between sinking the budget law and the election law. I'm not an attorney and I'm not the county clerk, but the timeframes to determine if an election is needed to raise your tax lid in accordance with the publishing times for elections, holding the elections, they overlap. And so I'm not sure how that will come to resolution. I just wanted to make you aware of that, that there's going to be challenges there. These, the tax lid is based on the Consumer Price Index. And I'm not an economist, but I know a little about the Consumer Price Index. And I will say that market value of property in Kansas is not based on the Consumer Price Index. So eventually there will be inequities, I'm sure, just a heads up. There's a lot about that out there on the Kansas Legislature website and KAC will be getting us more information. I printed off some of the information on Senate Bill 270 and I've been trying to make my way through it. There's a lot of exclusions that won't have to be met to raise, but they are numerous and varied and more than we can go into here. Mike might be better at that.
So how does that affect your department for, do you have to go out and, do you have to reevaluate some things or is it just...
No, no, we'll keep on going as we've gone. We will set values based on market value of the properties. We will certify those values to the clerk. It's in the budget process, looking at the total values with the budget and the increase to the CPI where it will come into play for the Commissioners, well, for all municipalities. Schools, cities, fire departments, everybody. So it's a pretty broad law with no discussion prior, no evidence, there was no time for evidence for or against, just the legislators' discussion, so... Celine County assessed values, here we are. And if we could get the lights down a little bit, it might be a little easier to see what you're looking at. Oh, thank you, John. What you're looking at here is the 2015 values, you know, that'll do it, we'll just, we'll make it work. Our assessed values for real estate were four hundred eighty-eight million, one hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred thirty-five dollars. That is an increase of about two point six percent over last year on real estate. At the same time, personal property assessed value was twenty-one point eight million dollars. That was a decrease of about thirteen percent. We have oil and gas in here which fluctuates depending on equipment. Many of our oil, much of our oil is exempt for low producing, but we do have equipment and things in there. For state assessed, those numbers aren't in yet, so at this time, reporting to you, I just rolled the value there from the previous year. That gives you a total difference in valuation from fourteen to fifteen of just slightly under one point nine percent. If we look at that over a ten-year timeframe then, we're looking from 2006 to 2015, we see over that ten-year timeframe, real estate values, assessed values increased twenty percent. Personal property, however, has taken a nosedive during the same timeframe from sixty-six million to twenty-one million, a reduction of sixty-seven percent. That is based on legislation and exemptions by the legislature, partially personal property that has reached its bottom out percent good. Our total overall then, change in value from 2006 to 2015 is just about nine percent. Y'all probably remember in the nineties, I bought a house in the nineties over on Hickory, bought it in ninety-four for, gosh, I think about forty-seven thousand dollars and moved in 2001, sold it and purchased another property and sold it for seventy-nine thousand dollars. And that was seven years. And so that, that was quite an increase. We're not seeing that now. To show it a little better, I'm looking here at a chart that shows you the very slow incline in real estate values over that timeframe. A twenty percent increase over ten years is really not very much. What we do, though, we take into consideration, if you'll recall, the Great Depression or, you know, the, from 2008 to about 2010 and 11. When we look at personal property, now this is a slight increase in real estate, but when we look at personal property, we see a nosedive. Now, I'll remind you, and I'll go back, that in real estate, we're talking about four hundred million dollars. In personal property, we're talking about forty million dollars. So granted, the number that we started out with was less, but that's a sixty-seven percent decline. We are not going to see inclines in personal property or increases as long as the legislation to exempt continues. I wanted to tell you a little bit about KCAA and that is Kansas County Appraisers Association and Sean Robertson and myself attended that last week in Manhattan at the Bluemont Hotel, which is really a nice facility right down by Aggieville. They had a lot of things, a lot of breakout sessions for us to go to and the subjects were numerous and varied. Some of the things that we talked about was Kansas Ag values and that was a really interesting presentation by an economist, associate professor at K-State who talked about the rate of return and how Ag land values have risen because it was a good rate of return when the markets were down, a better rate of return than we could get on money markets and CDs. But I don't wanna glaze your eyes over too quickly, so I'll move on. We talked about fracking and earthquakes. We had two presenters, pretty much polar opinions about it. Fracking causes earthquakes and fracking doesn't cause earthquakes. So that was interesting. Fee simple valuations, ratio studies, staffing benchmarks. I thought one interesting thing was that in Kansas, there are one point seven million parcels and typically one point four percent of them appeal, or that was the case in 2014. And out of those, sixty-one percent received changes. And that's in line with how we are here in Celine County. Well, you know, it's pretty close. We also talked a little bit about tax increment financing, which is something that I'm learning more about all the time because that will impact us with the star bonds. And I'll... And, uh, also PVD website compliance and legal updates. Lots of legal updates. So we have our appraisers out in the field and Jim, I may be by to get that boat because if we get much more rain, they'll be measuring underwater.
Oh, my God.
I've been letting it run around the outside of the pond for a couple of weeks.
Have you?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've had some challenges, but there's always plenty to do, but it's nice when they can go out in the field every day and get that production in, so.
It dries up pretty fast, doesn't it?
For the most part, if you're in new construction, it's a mess, but, yeah, yeah, most farms are in pretty good shape.
About the time it dries up, it rains again?
Mm-hmm, yes.
You can drive in my pasture, so.
Okay, it's, do I have permission?
Well, sure.
We've got questions.
Why would I say no?
Any questions? Appreciate the update.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, we'll move on to item number five.
Approval of County Commission Minutes for June ninth, 2015.
Any comments or questions? Accept a motion?
I move that we accept, um, June twentieth, um, what was the date?
June ninth.
June ninth.
June ninth, fifteen minutes.
Motion to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five to zero. Is there any other business that needs to come for the Commission today? Seeing none, announcements, we will reconvene back at eleven fifteen upstairs.
Eleven fifteen.
Eleven fifteen.
Eleven fifteen.
One fifteen, thank you. You guys are always really good, am I correct?
If I could just make a little announcement.
Yes.
I, I, I've been meaning to do this every time we meet and, um, I thought this would be appropriate since I believe, was it Saturday was Flag Day and because we're coming up with, um, Fourth of July. A lot of people talking about flag etiquette and there was a, a nice article in the paper about flag etiquette. But we've been saying the Pledge of Allegiance incorrectly. That's why I'm not rushing through the Pledge of Allegiance when I say it, but there is no comma when you say one nation under God. It's, everyone says one nation under God and if you look at the way it was written, there is no comma there, so there is no pause there. So for those of you that think I'm rushing through the Pledge of Allegiance, it's because I'm saying it, reciting it the way it was written and it is one nation under God and then you proceed with the rest of the Pledge of Allegiance, so.
Gee, I think I'm doing it just the way I did when I was in the first grade.
I, I think the reason people pause there is because when you learned it, you learned it in pieces like you learn a poem. But as adults, I think we all probably know the Pledge of Allegiance and there is no comma there. So I'm not saying, I'm not rushing you through the Pledge of Allegiance, there's just no comma when you say one nation under God.
All right, thank you very much, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned until one, one fifteen.